What I did do, I had a senior services meeting yesterday and they're opening on the seventh.
Oh, everything open?
They said it's all or nothing.
Alright.
So they're going the whole, the whole thing. They have adopted, board adopted some, um, basically to, uh, to do away with all of these mask and mandates and all that kind of stuff. And all they're, all they're dealing with is, uh, having a notice that says, you know, if you're ill, don't, don't come, you know, basically, you know? But, uh, um, I think they're, um, they still have to do buses. They're still, they still have to, I think the transit authority does that, huh?
That's a federal.
Yeah, they still have to have everybody on the buses and transportation still has to wear masks.
Yep.
But other than that, uh, should be businesses normal in a couple of weeks.
Good. Mr. Redeker?
Yes, sir, I was on the radio station Tuesday morning with WRNR. Topic of discussion mostly was the, uh, the decision we made about the Tusker zoning district. It was just general discussion, nothing out of the ordinary. Fun to be there, had Mr. Stubblefield was one of the moderators as well as Mr. Mike Height. So it was a, it was a good morning.
Well, good.
Real good one because it was raining and didn't have a whole lot to do that the first thing in the morning.
That's a good, sometimes that's a good day.
Yeah, yeah. And then I had a, uh, Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority meeting. We had one of our own, uh, the mechanic, head mechanic, I apologize for not having his name right in front of me, received an award, was nominated at the state level for his, um, excellence of work.
Great.
And my gosh, I feel bad and I can't remember his name, but anyway, I'll look for that one. They implemented the new software program. They all have their tablets in their vehicles and it, and it is a, uh, a software that if one of the drivers would happen to call in or, or miss, you know, this designated route, it automatically reverts over to another driver so they can pick up the slack and then, and go from there. It really works well with on-demand service. They don't have any data gathered yet. It's still pretty new, but once they, uh, they get that implemented and, or it's implemented, but once they get able to, uh, do some data collecting, then they'll come back in and let us know how that's going.
How they doing with, uh, you know, lost the revenue on ridership because of the COVID stuff? Have they, have they got their subsidies from the federal government?
Still, still in that process. They've been, uh, they received their, um, stipend from Jefferson County and I think Harper's Ferry, so they, um...
Harper's Ferry, the Baywood.
Yeah, so I think that they, um, their finances are marginal, but yet they're still, uh, still able to provide the service. Their on-demand service is, is picked up here more than anything.
Councilperson Gokenaire?
Yes, sir, I had a planning commission meeting Monday night.
Tuesday now.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, thank you. Had several public hearings. The more notable one was, uh, for expansion, I forget what sections at Riverside Community on Route 11 North of Marlowe. We had a lot of, uh, feedback from the residents there concerned about the amenities that they were told would be there, uh, haven't been started, there's, and there were talk of it. Their builder has moved out, but developer is obviously still there, but, um, very concerned about the amenities that, that they were told would be there.
Are those bonded?
No.
The amenities aren't bonded?
That's why I just asked, uh, this morning about it. So we encourage, uh...
Where are they part of the plan? I mean, and I'd be, and the reason I ask that is because I've heard that same conversation many times, that people say that they were told these things are going to happen, but they actually weren't part of the plan that was submitted to the county to do it anyway.
Yeah, I think that, I don't know particularly about the plan, but it was on print, on the plan showing, on this is where the dog park is, this is where, you know, children's park is, and, you know, those things are shown on the plaque when, when they're actually selling the houses. Look, this will be here and that will be there. So I think there needs to be some discussion about the possibility of getting these amenities bonded to reassure the prospective buyers that you, that they're going to be there.
If it, I would think that if it's a part of a, of a plaque that was approved through our offices, that should be part of the bonding. However, if they create a different plaque that wasn't part of the planning process, then we have no control over that, but...
It could be that, I mean, it could be that they're just making, uh, designating space for those things to happen at the HOA's discretion as well.
Good.
You know, so, uh...
That's why I had suggested to the engineering firm that represents the project to please get with the developer and have a communication, uh, reestablished with the residents and the homeowners to just let them know. I think there's been a tremendous breakdown of communication and that's probably the biggest problem. Uh, you know, I, I don't think anybody is, you know, at this point trying to skirt their responsibilities, but there's been a, a total lack of communication.
But that's a good, that's a good point, really. I mean, if we're going to, if you're going to address that in the future, how do you handle, um, is that something that they can bond?
I, I think so. I'm not exactly sure. I think probably this one is a bit of a, oh, this is another phase in that project. So people bought the house, they paid, uh, phase three or four, that's, it's other sections that are always part of the stuff. My initial...
Well, and it's supposedly at the end of phase two is when the construction on these other projects is supposed to be started. They haven't finished phase two, but they went on to phase four, five, six.
Skirt language.
Yes, sir. So that's why, you know, they, they, they just need to talk and they need to communicate so that everybody understands the expectations of each other.
Alright. Alright, I don't have anything to report on, so we, um, any appointments on any of the boards?
I did, uh, I, I did find out yesterday, Amy told me yesterday that there's two vacancies at the seniors and we have it listed as one, so probably need to check.
Alright, um, Mr. Davis, you wanted to start us off with the, uh, well, let's see.
You want to do the MOU?
Yeah, let's do the MOU with the Pan, uh, Pan Authority.
This is pretty straightforward. As the council's aware, in 2018, um, you blessed, uh, the formation of a central garage, um, and, um, that, um, project has, uh, developed over the years and panned out very, very well. Uh, as you know, EPTA provides us with, uh, preventive maintenance. Uh, they do oil changes, vehicle inspections, um, you know, change filters, brake fluid, power steering fluid, things like that. Um, they also provide light maintenance service to include, uh, brake pad rotors, brake cables, brake hoses, uh, wheel bearing, straps, U-joints, fuel pumps, water pumps, et cetera. Uh, anything above and beyond preventive maintenance and light maintenance, um, we, uh, over the years, um, have developed a schedule, um, where, um, that work is distributed amongst, uh, the area of garages so everyone gets a piece of business. Uh, we had an MOU, uh, in 2018 with EPTA. Um, that MOU has not been changed, um, since it went into place and became effective on July 1st of 18. Um, they are requesting, um, a slight increase, uh, in their charges. Uh, currently we, we pay $25 per vehicle for preventive maintenance. They would like to have that increased to $30 per vehicle. Uh, light maintenance, we've currently paid $45 per mechanic hour and they would like to have that increased to $55 per mechanic hour. Um, this is well within our budget established for next fiscal year, um, and certainly would encourage the council to, to approve the continuation of the relationship with EPTA. They've done a great job for us. And, you know, we buy oil and everything involved, we do that directly and it's just delivered there, so...
That's a pretty big increase though, I mean, your 20% increase, it's not like, uh, is there a plan for a gradual or something or?
No.
I can see that though.
I mean, I don't think it's unreasonable, I'm just saying to jump 20% at one time, that's a pretty good percentage. Doesn't sound like much when you're talking $5 over, you know, a couple of dollars, but...
But it hasn't been adjusted in three years, so...
Nick's on a roll.
Yeah.
Alright, um, entertain a motion on MOU with the Transit Authority. President?
If we accept the MOU with the Transit Authority, give the president authorization to sign it up.
Alright, we have a motion on floor, we have a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, on our favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, the motion carries.
Is there a reason why there's a bunch of debris piled down 750 Baltimore Street? I went by there yesterday, off to the side of the building, there's a bunch of block and pile of dirt and stuff down there on the apartment.
Where they cut out the, cut out the doorways in the building.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, why is it piled up there?
Yes, it has been, it's been hauled out. Yeah, I guess just needs to be hauled out.
Yeah.
And there are places you can take out, that's, that's pretty of a standard fill anymore according to DEP.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not something that you can't find someplace.
Think the American Legion of FFW is looking for stuff across the street.
Still?
I thought, I don't know, it's been a while.
I'm surprised they were able, they even fill out in, I mean, that's a close one.
Yeah. Maybe not, uh, like I said, it's been a while ago.
Yeah.
Been filling in there for years.
Yeah.
Yeah, just kind of nice source sitting down there beside the building.
Yeah, the building's actually looking pretty good.
Yeah.
Clean, they maintain, um, so, alright, um, alright, moving on. Bid opening for the RFP on the generator maintenance and service, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir, uh, you actually have two bid openings scheduled for today. Your 10 o'clock bid opening is for, uh, generator maintenance and service. Uh, this is provide all maintenance and service for the five generators that we have in the county. Uh, as you know, we have a generator at 38 West South Street, uh, which is the Judicial Center, we have one at the Sheriff's Department, 510 South Rowley Street. Of course, we have the one down at, uh, our emergency, um, operations and 911 center, 802 M. Ralph Drive. Uh, we also have a generator on the central dispatch tower that sits behind 802, and then of course we have the, the generator on our mountain tower site. Um, this contract is for routine maintenance and emergency service. Uh, the current contract is with Green Tech Fuel Maintenance out of Westminster, Maryland. Um, the current contract expires on June 30th. It's the, we're finishing up the third year of a three-year contract. Currently, we pay $4,125 annually for this service. Uh, the RFP was distributed to four generator maintenance companies. It was placed on our website and social media platforms. It was advertised in Mark'sburg Journal on Wednesday, May 26th. We do have certification, a publication on file and it's also in your read ahead packet. Uh, we had mandatory pre-bid conference on Monday, June 7th, 2021. We had five companies that attended. Bids were due no later than 4:00 PM on Wednesday, June 23rd, which was yesterday. We did receive four bids prior to the deadline and all four of the bid submissions did, uh, attend the mandatory pre-bid conference.
Well, how, how has our service been with the current?
It's been, it's been good. Um, we, uh, we've had some issues recently, um, with the generator at the Judicial Center, um, and we found out that it was more of an electrical issue inside at the panel box than it was with the generator itself, so...
This place here, so...
Um, but yeah, we've been, but, um, Green Tech did not attend the pre-bid conference and they also did not submit a bid.
Sorry.
Number one.
Alright, um... Uh, the first one is with Fidelity Power Systems out of Sparks, Maryland.
Mr. President, there should be a lump sum price at Marytop that says total price to service five generators.
Yep, um, that price is $4,400. Standard labor, uh, rate per hour is $100 an hour. After-hours labor rate is $150 an hour and holiday labor rate is $200 an hour. And then there's another option price for, uh, pricing, uh, per generator to perform resistive load bank testing. Minimum two hours per generator, so the, the first one is the Detroit generator, which is 230 KW, is 1,100. The 450 KW Kohler is 1,300. The 10 KW Kohler is 600. The 20 KW Kohler is 600. And the 150 KW Kohler is 900. So that's their bid.
And Fidelity Power actually had the maintenance contract for Green Tech, so we do have this period of foot in.
Bid number two. Carter Machinery, uh, out of Salem, Virginia. Total price to service five generators, $11,385 pre-tax. Um, standard labor rate is 162, after-hours is 243, holiday is 324, travel mileage is 125. Per 10 or per day or?
Per day, it says. Per...
Per tax.
Per tech, per day.
Per day. The, uh, load, uh, form, uh, valuation would be $1,200, uh, dollars for the, uh, 230 KW Detroit, $1,200 for the 450 KW Kohler, uh, $650 for the 10 and the 20 KW Kohler each, and $850 for the 150 KW Kohler.
Did you say Carter Machine?
Carter Machine, which is all, sold out, all.
Used to be all.
Yeah. Next one is Curtis Power Solutions. Looks like this one would be out of Baltimore, Maryland, or Fredericksburg, Virginia. Alright, total price to service five generators is $4,200. Standard labor rate per hour is 135, um, after-hours 202, holiday and, uh, labor rate is 202.50, I'm sorry. Uh, travel mileage rate is a dollar fifty per mile. Um, on the 230 KW Detroit is 750 for the test. On the 450 Kohler is, uh, 980. On the 10 and 20 is $680 a piece and on the Kohler KW is $720 for the, the test. Can we go back to, to, um, bid number one real quick? The holiday rate was the same as the overtime rate. It was, uh, both almost 202.50. There's no, on the first one, I just want to make sure, there was no travel rate, no mileage rate. Three.
What was the first one out of?
Fidelity Power, Loveton, Sparksville, Maryland.
Never heard of Sparksville.
Alright, the last one is going to be, uh, Palco Sales Corp., P-A-L-C-O, um, Winfield, West Virginia. Total price to service five generators, $8,963.20, standard labor rate 125, uh, labor rate for after-hours is 200, uh, holiday labor rate is $312.50, travel mileage rate, um, per hour is $90. All the service on the, uh, resistive load is $800 per, uh, uh, generator, all five of them. So that concludes the bids on the generator, uh, maintenance. Mr. Davis, you have something on the fire alarm testing and maintenance?
Yes, sir, um, your next bid opening is for fire alarm, fire sprinkler testing and maintenance. Uh, it's the maintenance service and testing contract for all of our fire alarm systems and sprinkler systems for 10 county-owned buildings. Um, the contract provides, uh, the scope of work for some annual testing and also for some quarterly testing for building per system, um, that tests the various components of our fire alarm and sprinkler systems. The current contract is with BFP International, uh, out of Hanover, Maryland. Uh, currently we pay $7,407 annually. Again, we're in the, we're just finishing the third year of a three-year contract. Uh, the RFP was distributed to eight firms identified as doing fire alarm and sprinkler testing and maintenance. Uh, it was placed on our website and social media platforms. Again, it was advertised in the Mark'sburg Journal on Wednesday, May 26th. We do have certification, publication on file in your packet. We did issue three addendums. Uh, mandatory pre-bid conference was held on Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. We had seven companies attend the mandatory pre-bid conference. Uh, bids were due no later than 4:00 PM on Wednesday, June 23rd, which was when it began with yesterday, and we also received four bids for this contract. And all four did attend the mandatory pre-bid. And this would just be one lump sum bid.
Alright, the first one is Arc Systems and Columbia, Maryland. And the lump sum bid is $7,340. $7,340. The second one. Is from Patriot Fire and Security LLC, um... Out of Winchester, Virginia. And their bid is $6,450. $6,450. Bid number three. Is BFP International out of Hanover, Maryland. Is $15,889. $15,889. And this one is Brewer and Company of West Virginia Inc. out of Hedgesville, West Virginia. I'm sorry, Hedgesville Road, out of Martinburg. Brewer and Company. Which they've done some workforce before, I think, on the sprinkler system.
Yes, sir.
Um, $2,000 for the fire alarm and $5,200 for the sprinkler testing, so $7,200. And Mr. Davis, the, on this, do we have anything, and I know that we're needing to do some stuff, but I guess we need to get with Jack and talk about 750 Baltimore Street?
We are putting together a plan for 750 Baltimore Street. Uh, as you knew, know, we, um, I want, I would like to recommend to the council sometime and it would like to do it, and once we know what our, our unencumbered fund balance is as well as, uh, some of our funding reserves, um, we have put that building, we got, we got a bargain on that building.
$3 square foot, and that's counting all the property?
It is. Um, I'd like to do something, of course, with, uh, the front and the side so that as you, you know, we've, we've done it, the council's done a really good job of getting our buildings up to where what we think standard is a good standard. That building, I would like the front facade to be, uh, addressed so that it looks like one of our, the building that we, we proud to have. Um, we have some roof issues that, that needs to be addressed. Um, we have some HVAC issues that need to be addressed, to be addressed particularly, uh, as we move forward with the master plan of, of this building. And we need to do something with the sprinkler system. Um, and sprinkler system and whether we put a wet system or a dry system in there will depend on when we can get the, the, the building properly heated. So, um, Jack and I are putting something together for, for the council's consideration of the happening in July. So that's a long way of saying yes, we, we have.
Right, right.
We have to do some things with something.
And Jack, it was brought up this morning about the, the pile of block that's there on the side of the building. Can we get that cleaned up, please?
Yes, sir.
Alright, um, and then the other thing that, that, um, there's a fence, and Anthony, this might have to deal with your department, but there's a fence right here, uh, north of the water tower. It appears like it's our fence because it's continuous on multiple properties. That's really getting bad, it's starting to fall over. If that's our fence, I would like to entertain a possibility of getting that replaced and, you know, clean, clean us, your stuff up. But I, I've never noticed it, but it is, it, it goes quite a few properties, so it's going to tell me that it's our fence probably.
And, and that's, and I did mention the 750 Baltimore Street, that's one of the fences you have at 750, it's one of the things that Jack and I area all talk about, particularly since, um, that's where our central garage with the outfitting of all the cruisers, um, will be working out of, potentially have 30 police cruisers standing behind that building.
Right.
I'd like to have some security.
Well, did we ever demo that little shed that's on the other side of the creek and get rid of all that?
Yes, we did. Uh, that was, that's where we think we found it at, uh...
Right, yeah, I remember somebody was...
Yeah, and once, and once we dealt with, with that, then I had Jack just...
Right.
And it was, it wasn't used for anything.
Yeah, that just were...
Alright, um, okay. And there'll be, we'll review those and get back with the recommendation. Um, next on our agenda, we have Jeffrey Smith here, a candidate for the Board of Zoning. Uh, Mr. Smith, have you come up to the podium? And I guess you're Mr. Smith, is that right? Are you Mr. Smith? Okay, um, we don't have a Mr. Smith in.
Is it early or?
No.
No, we're right on time.
Daniel's not here yet.
No. Alright, then I guess we'll take a quick break and go from there. All right, then I guess we'll take a quick break and go from there.
All right, we're back in session. Earlier today, we amended the agenda and said we would not need executive session at 11:15. But we have found out that we do need executive session for economic development purposes. So that will be...
There will be no action coming back?
Right, right. So, and so we're good to go on that. Next on our agenda, do we need a motion to do that, Anthony, you think? To put it back on the agenda since we made a motion to take it off? I'm sure we do.
Yeah, I think that's...
Entertain a motion to put executive session back on the agenda for economic development matters.
Second.
Motion been made, second in any discussion? If not, long favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Next on our agenda, Sheriff Nathan Harmon, the discussion regarding the silver service and the surplus shotgun. Sir, it's always good to see you.
It's a pleasure to be back. I appreciate you all having me and agreeing to meet with me on what I feel to be two really important issues. Which one should I talk about first?
I'd say the silver service would be fair. We have the county clerk in the audience as well for the silver service side. And that clerk is Ms. Mauk.
I'll go ahead and distribute the letter provided to me by the Deputy Sheriff's Association. You all can review it. And obviously, in our previous discussions, we've discussed the unique issues that we're dealing with when it comes to recruiting. And finding good qualified votes to not only apply but actually show up for testing. Most recently, we've had two test cycles. I believe there was 25 that applied, eight that showed up, and none of the eight passed the written exam. Most recently, two weekends ago, we had another test cycle where 24 applicants showed up or applied. Seven showed up and seven failed the written exam. So additional discussions need to be had, which the Civil Service Commission expressed that they are willing to sit down and look at attempts to either revamp the test or potentially lower, which I never like to do, but in a small amount, maybe 70% passing qualification to potentially a 65. Those discussions are still to be had, but as you well know, those discussions take quite a while, especially when you got to the Charles. With that said, I took the discussion and the advice of the commission, spoke with the Deputy Sheriff's Association, and they too agree that we are living in difficult times and understand the recruitment problems that we're experiencing, especially most recently. And they also respect that we need to be ahead of this before we're leaving a lower and lower ramping.
This is a nationwide problem, as Mr. Davis and I talked about earlier. You know, it's just not your department, but it's nationwide because of what's happened, the atmosphere, you know, that's been created.
And we're competing against city markets, also. Mike Lang said it's on the city market for a civil service board, and they can't, they borrow or steal qualified people.
We can't compete with sign-on bonuses, nor do I feel that we need to do that. I feel that the department in and by itself is professional enough, and we're doing so many good things that it attracts folks to our office a lot. We have had various pre-certified officers express a lot of interest if this was to go through. That would entertain a lot. So, you know, when we, when we looking at the numbers that recently produced those that failed the test, you know, we also got a look, and the commission is well aware of the state police issue. I've been to Charles, then I've talked to the second command down there, I've talked to the troop commander here. They have expressed the fact that what you're seeing now is not going away anytime soon and could potentially get worse. And not that, and that's for a long time to come. I've had enough discussions where I believe in the near future that you'll have an opportunity to speak with their representatives here soon. But we still need to schedule that for them so they can give you a more in-depth policy look at what the state police is dealing with. But with that said, we got to also look at sending people down to the academy. The monies that are spent currently during COVID procedures, and the superintendent of the Western Kentucky State Police is really, really heavy on those that were vaccinated, the vaccination in general. And I don't foresee the 10 weeks of that staying down there going away anytime soon, which means we have to pay overtime for those deputies that go down there and have to stay down there. We pay over $400 just to equip them to go down with their uniforms and whatnot, the hotel rooms they have to stay at prior so they can get tested and then, and then test the next day. But the money, even if COVID restrictions are lifted, think about the wear and tear on the vehicles, the fuel that's involved, the 16-week academy that they'll have to attend, I believe it's 15-week, 16-week in bold. But all the traveling back and forth and the thousands and thousands of dollars that could potentially be saved if people improve this. And what we are offering is something we spoke about earlier. When we talked about pre-certified officers, the Deputy Sheriff's Association has agreed that if someone comes to us with five years' experience, they start at four. If someone comes to us with three years, they start at two. If someone comes to us with six years, they start at five. So we did a deputy level one, level two, and level three pre-certified officer entry pay scale. Deputy level one, which is essentially a graduate from the academy with anything one, 2.99 years in, is 42,836. Deputy level two, anybody from three to 5.99 years in, is 44,756. And deputy level three, which will cut it off there, if anyone brings five-plus years into the department, then they start at 49,531. I believe this is a very attractive thing, but I think what's even more important to mention is what do we garner when we get that certified officer? Are they agent trained? Are they trained in proper use of force, de-escalation, active shooter training? All the training that they've had, they bring with them, instructor training or not. So there's a lot of pinnacle for accepting these pre-certified officers.
Now, part of their pre-certification, is there on some of the other certifications of shooter training and all the training certification? Is that done by choice per? Or is that all part of the overall certification that they have to have 15 certifications? Or do you pick and choose which one certification you want?
Well, it's a process as per the department, whatever the department needs. For example, I have an NRA fire instructor certification. It's a law enforcement firearm certification. Qualified to teach law enforcement officers any type of firearms training tactic or not, even to include qualifications. Obviously, the state requires a semi-qual and an annual qual, and that has to be taught by a certified instructor with that qualification or comparable. And right now, NRA's the, we're going to. So you have to invest in that individual, and that individual has to be one that you have vetted that is interested in that topic area.
I guess the reason I'm asking that, Sheriff, is, let's say, and maybe I'm completely wrong, and you can agree with my wife. But let's say we have somebody that comes in with six years of, of, of time served, and we start about five years, but one of our guys at five years has 20 training certifications, and maybe the one coming in only has 10. Have you looked at any variance there that we have to treat people fairly, or is that...
Well, the commission has a policy that pertains to county employees, not necessarily Burton County Sheriff's Office, where the county employees are either reimbursed, I don't have...
...session back on the agenda for Economic Development Matters.
Second.
Motion been made, second in any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Next on our agenda is Sheriff Nathan Harmon. It's the discussion of regarding the Silver Service and the Surplus Shotgun. Sir, it's always good to see you.
It's a pleasure to be back. I appreciate you all having me and agreeing to meet with me on what I feel to be two really important issues. Which one should I talk about first?
I'd say the Silver Service would be fair. We have the county clerk in the audience as well for the Silver Service side. And that clerk is Ms. Mauk.
I'll go ahead and distribute the letter provided to me by the Deputy Sheriff's Association. You all can review it. And obviously, in our previous discussions, we've discussed the unique issues that we're dealing with when it comes to recruiting and finding good qualified votes to not only apply but actually show up or test them. Most recently, we've had two test cycles. I believe there was 25 that applied, eight that showed up, and none of the eight passed the written exam. Most recently, it's two weekends ago, we had another test cycle where 24 applicants showed or applied, seven showed up, and seven failed the written exam. So additional discussions need to be had, which the Civil Service Commission have expressed that they are willing to sit down and look at attempts to either revamp the test or potentially lower, which I never like to do, but in a small amount, it could be 70% passing qualification to potentially a 65. Those discussions are still to be had, but as you well know, those discussions take quite a while, especially when you got to Charleston. With that said, I took the discussion and the advice of the commission, spoke with the Deputy Sheriff's Association, and they too agree that we are living in difficult times and understand the recruitment problems that we're experiencing, especially most recently. And they also respect that we need to be ahead of this before we're leaving a lower and lower ramping.
This is a nationwide problem, as Mr. Davis and I talked about earlier. You know, it's just not your department, but it's nationwide because of what's happened, the atmosphere, you know, that's been created.
And we're competing against city markets also. Mike Langs is on the City March for a Civil Service Board, and they can't, they borrow or steal qualified people right now.
We can't compete with sign-on bonuses, nor do I feel that we need to do that. I feel that the department in and by itself is professional enough, and we're doing so many good things that attracts folks to our office a lot. We have had various pre-certified officers express a lot of interest if this was to go through, that would entertain a lot. So, you know, when we, when we looking at the numbers that recently produced those that failed the test, you know, we also got a look, and the commission is well aware of the state police issue. I've been to Charleston, I've talked to the second commander down there, I've talked to the troop commander here. They have expressed the fact that what you're seeing now is not going away anytime soon and could potentially get worse, and not that, and that's for a long time to come. I've had enough discussions where I believe in the near future that you'll have an opportunity to speak with their representatives here soon, but we still need to schedule that for us so they can give you a more in-depth policy to look at what the state police is dealing with. But with that said, we got to also look at sending people down to the academy, the monies that are spent currently during the COVID procedures, and the superintendent of the West Virginia State Police is really, really heavy on those that we vaccinated, the vaccination in general, and I don't foresee the 10 weeks of debt staying down there going away anytime soon, which means we have to pay overtime for those deputies that go down there and have to stay down there. We pay over $400 just to equip them to go down with their uniforms and whatnot, but hotel rooms they have to stay at prior so they can get tested and then, and then test the next day. But the money, even if COVID restrictions are lifted, think about the wear and tear in the vehicles, the fuel that's involved, the 16-week academy that they'll have to attend, I believe it's 15, 16 weeks in total. But all the traveling back and forth and the thousands and thousands of dollars that could potentially be saved if people improve this. And what we are offering is something we spoke about earlier. When we talked about pre-certified officers, the Deputy Sheriff's Association has agreed that if someone comes to us with five years' experience, they start at four. If someone comes to us with three years, they start at two. If someone comes to us with six years, they start at five. So we did a Deputy Level One, Level Two, and Level Three, Pre-Certified Officer Entry Pay Scale. Deputy Level One, which is essentially a graduate from the academy with anything one to 2.99 years in, is 42,836. Deputy Level Two, anybody from three to 5.99 years in, is 44,756. And Deputy Level Three, which will cut it off there, if anyone brings five-plus years into the department, then they start at 49,531. I believe this is a very attractive thing, but I think what's even more important to mention is what do we garner when we get that certified officer? Are they Asian trained? Are they trained in proper use of force, de-escalation, active shooter training? All the training that they've had, they bring with them, instructor training or not. So there's a lot of pinnacle for accepting these pre-certified officers.
Now, part of their pre-certification, is there on some of the other certifications of shooter training and all the training certification? Is that done by choice per? Or is that all part of the overall certification that they have to have 15 certifications? Or do you pick and choose which one certification you want?
Well, it's a process as per the department, whatever the department needs. For example, I have a NRA firearm instructor certification. It's a law enforcement firearm certification. Qualified to teach law enforcement officers any type of firearm training tactic or not, even to include qualifications. Obviously, the state requires a semi-qual and an annual qual, and that has to be taught by a certified instructor with that qualification or comparable, and right now, NRA's the going to. So you have to invest in that individual, and that individual has to be the one that you embedded that is interested in that topic area.
I guess the reason I'm asking that, Sheriff, is, let's say, and maybe I'm completely wrong, and you can agree with my wife, but let's say we have somebody that comes in with six years of, of, of time served, and we start about five years, but one of our guys at five years has 20 training certifications, and maybe the one coming in only has 10. Have you looked at any variance there that we have to treat people fairly, or is that...
Well, the, the commission has a policy that pertains to county employees, not necessarily Burke County Sheriff's Office, where the county employees are either reimbursed, I don't have the policy in front of me, but they can be paid for their certifications. Currently, we do not have a policy that exists like that. I would, I would love to have a, at least a specialty pay increase of a small amount for those that do invest that kind of time, go away from their families, and get that kind of certification. They're not easy certifications, and you're then, in essence, asking for this individual to come back to the department and teach over 60 deputies and do so as efficiently as possible. So that's a big burden, that's their responsibility. I would love to see us discuss that further in the future, but I do know a county policy exists for county employees that does not obtain the sheriff's license. I would be completely open to that.
Yeah. So Sheriff, you're talking about, and obviously, we know there's a large amount of cost, and by the way, I'm, I'm in favor of, obviously, hiring individuals that are pre-qualified and getting them in, getting them boots on the ground quicker, so to speak. Are you suggesting that there's a, there's an X amount of dollars that you have to pay for each individual to become an officer? That they have to go through this training and it costs this much in the onset? So you're, you're paying for travel, you're paying for lodging, you're paying for these type of things for them to do that? So if you're hiring this, these, these individuals at a higher pay scale, which obviously your budget doesn't reflect, are you, are you stating that you'll be able to take some of that money from those areas to transfer into that if you need to infuse the budget? Or are you saying that you're going to need to come to the council and get more money in the budget to, to handle that? You understand what I'm saying, Alan?
I see what you're saying. I'm saying that we will be able to save quite a bit of money on the front end when we talk about the vehicles, the lodging, the $1,500 tuition just to attend the academy, but not even that, but the FTO program, the six-month FTO program that these officers have to go through with the deputy, three months prior to the academy, three months after, worth a little bit.
And I get all that, but a budget is structured to, to do, go through that process, right? So if the budget is structured right now to go through that process, my, my question is, where does the money come from for the individuals that are making more money than your budget is set up for right now? When you bring them in pre-qualified, are we going to be, are you going to be able to pull money from these other areas where you're using for training and put that into that budget to be able to be self-sustaining in the Sheriff's Department? Or do you anticipate coming back to the council and needing more money? That's my question.
So is, I'm sure a new, a new officer sent it down to the, to the State Police Academy and stuff like that, and the lodging and stuff is part of your training budget. Is that fair to say? So I guess Mr. Delia is asking, are you thinking of taking some of your operational training budget and moving it over to personnel to, to fill the additional costs for the personnel? Plus, that's the question he's asking, but at the same time, we also know there's a huge savings that no one sees, because if I'm correct, I think it's a year and a half before a new hire is actually fully able to be in that vehicle by theirself.
At least a year, so yes.
Yeah, so there's a ride, so now we have two deputies riding in the same car, and only one is assisting the one that's qualified, and the other one's there for a ride along, let's say.
But that's not, that's not saving, that's a byproduct of what he's trying to do. So the byproduct is a great byproduct, without a doubt. I get it, and I think it's a great idea, totally supportive, but my job is also to come up with funding, and is this going to cost, are we going to have to come up with more money to infuse your budget by doing this? Or is there money that can be transferred from, from training or from transportation or from those issues over to make you self-sustainable? And obviously, it would, it would, there would have to be an infusion, the, the next year's budget would increase because of these positions that come in pre-qualified.
Yes, and I would never come forth to the mission and say, here you go, put this bill, hire this gentleman. I would definitely meet to some proportion the investment that goes into the academy itself and reallocate that to respond to salaries and wages.
And the flip side of that, if I'm thinking really quickly, which is, is, you know, if we're going to increase our workforce, then the cost of training per qualified deputy even goes up. So we got to be careful, it wouldn't be tit for tat, you know?
Correct.
I would think that with what you're, what you're proposing in the thought process, the concept, to answer Dan's question, I, I think initially, it would be very close to a wash with the amount of money expended.
And, and that's, and that's where I was hitting at, if it is, but, but he's still got to, he's still got to transfer that. He's got to be able to look at that side of it and transfer it.
Yeah, so, so when you bring that deputy on, you, you're kind of summarizing your budget, especially on the training portion of your budget. Okay, I, I would have to transfer this $2,000 for training for this particular officer, perhaps over the payroll.
I think what I'm hearing is...
I think it'd be close to a wash.
I'm thinking we're, I'm here, we endorse, you know, what it is, and, and we said that several months ago, right?
It's an avenue that, I understand that this will not be exercised all the time. This will be offered, it will be presented. We, we have to have an avenue currently because of the problems that presented to the commission, and this is not something that's going to happen frequently. This would be something that, you know, if you actually think about the $41,475 that we're paying that individual to be down at the academy and not using the road, we are eliminating that essential cost effectively on the road in two months' period. Plus, you're garnering all the training that they've brought with them that we have zero dollars invested in. So they're bringing that, so there is cost savings in the, in the, in the long run of that. I just would never come to the commission and ask for, yeah, done the full, click the full bill. I'd be more than happy to be halfway, that's how important this issue is.
Yeah, it just sounds like it's a working, I mean, it's, it's going to be a continued working, work in progress to keep looking at, looking at your budget and all, all that and how the training...
And as the council knows, I look at the control report every month, and really every quarter. So, you know, at the end of the first quarter of the fiscal year, if any of these folks are in that, are brought in under this program, we would look at it, and if the unencumbered fund balance or salaries is greater than, is less than 75%, then we'll know that some adjustments have to be made. I think the sheriff's proposal, and we, years ago, we did a calculation of what it costs to send someone to the academy, take into consideration. And if, it's substantial.
It's a lot of money.
You know, back then, I think it was anywhere from eight to $10,000.
Well, not, I mean, you got all that stuff, and you got out of the uniforms, you got, you know, all that stuff.
So I think the first year absolutely will be, when you bring these folks on board, it will be budget due to an answer to your question. The only thing is my adopted cost to the council is this will be a recurring cost, so that next year, when we're putting together your personnel expenses, there, there, there could be an increase.
Sure.
And we'll know what it's attributed to, but it's something I wouldn't want the council to...
Yeah, and it's going to be minimal. I mean, we're not talking, and, and the crazy thing is, it's a, if you want to get right down to the dollars and cents, it's really hard to budget, because you don't know if the somebody's coming in with 15 years' experience or they're coming in with three.
Oh, no, and, and that's exactly what I'm saying. I mean, it's going to be a work in progress that you're going to have to look at each one, weigh your budget out, and, and see where we're at. I mean, obviously, i- in the initial, you have vacancies and those type of things, so your budget is always going to be a little heavy because of those vacancies, so there's additional money in there. But when, like Alan's saying, when it hits, it's the following year. But the goal is to have all those positions filled anyway. So, you know, it, it should continually go up with pay scale increases anyway.
So I guess my question, Sheriff, would be, I know you spent time in Charleston to try to get all this worked out, so is everything worked out legislatively and through the civil service, through the state of West Virginia for us to move forward or something like this?
The Civil Service Commission here in Berkeley County, who have the authority to make amendments to laws and regulations, has been presented with the draft and is agreeable approaching this topic.
Okay, so, and that's the only thing we need? We don't need anything legislatively or anything like that? Okay, because I know you're going to work on that. And we've been talking about this now for probably four months. So I guess now it's time to, for us to act, you know, and move forward, I think. I mean, I don't know if we, we've given you, I think, the authority to move forward with your, with your thought, you know, and, and, so I guess, and I'm trying to ask, what's the next step?
Has, has legal counsel reviewed this and made sure?
I haven't noticed.
Okay, so, so that's going to be the next step. Make sure we're all within the law, because I hate for the sheriff to arrest himself one day, but, and I don't want him to arrest me neither. But, so, can you do that really quick?
Yes.
And do we have room for squeeze him back in next week?
Put you back in.
Yeah, so, because I want to get this done. I mean, I've, I've heard you and others say that you have some pretty good recruits out there that if this was in place, we could probably hire.
Sheriff, have any vacancies you have now?
At least four, four, perhaps a lot.
Right.
Yeah, we have two.
So, so time is of essence.
It is, and this is a, this is a very, I wouldn't say rare, but it won't be frequent. It'll be appropriate, presented to the commission, and, you know, I, I understand that legal is going to do the big deal with this, but I do appreciate your...
He's already said he's going to have it done for us for next week.
I think it's, I think it's important also that, that once this gets approved, for us to get ahead of the curve, because I can see other counties trying to do the same thing based on what Berkeley County has to do.
I think it's a great opportunity for law enforcement officers to come back here to Berkeley County.
Well, and, and we've said very multiple times publicly that we like our men in uniform and laces, right? We appreciate them. You have some bad apples, but that doesn't make the whole bushel bad, you know? And so, I, I really need clarification on one other thing or reminder. This only goes for pre-certified West Virginia police officers, or could it be from another state?
That's the issue that we got to do legislatively. So by law, you have to be a resident of the state, of the county in which you're trying to enroll, and that's not the same stipulation under the current civil service rule and regulation if you're a very new applicant. So it's very, it's awkward why they would allow a non-resident to apply to Berkeley County Sheriff's Office, and they force a resident of Berkeley County who is already certified police officer to be a resident of Berkeley County. That has to be changed substantially, and that's what I'm going to be working on in Charleston. So currently, we cannot hire anyone out of state. If that were ever to come to fruition, then now it becomes a comparison to post standards as West Virginia is concerned, and how people are those in the state that were the pre-certified officers.
So we can lose our deputies and police officers in West Virginia to a surrounding state, but we can't recruit their people back in. That's crazy.
That is crazy.
I think that's a topic for legislative summit again. I don't know, maybe, maybe that's some type of old-school gentleman's agreement that was put together from state to state so that we're not stealing people from the other side, I don't know.
Somebody booked the agreement.
But, but we had a bad negotiator, because we allowed them to do it.
Well, and, and maybe, maybe they don't have that agreement on the other side of the fence, and so...
I want to, I want to spit out some names here politically, but I'll, I'll keep my cool.
I applaud you guys for the effort here. I mean, I think it's a, it's a great opportunity, what you guys are, what you guys are putting together here, and, and it's a, it's a great opportunity to get those qualified officers here in Berkeley County, and that is our goal, is to do the best we can for the citizens here in Berkeley County. You guys are doing a great job.
I think our goal, I'd like to even add to that, our goal is next week for, or here sometime in the next couple of days, for Anthony or Jeff to check into it, make sure we have the green light from the legal standpoint, put you back on the agenda for next week, give him the green light to move forward. We got a sheriff and, and, and the whole sheriff's department working hand in hand with the county council that knows that it can't be a tug of war one way, you know? We, we, we got to, like you said, we got to meet in the middle, and, and you never let us down a, a, a road that, you know, I feel comfortable about going behind you, right? And, and I think that overall, this is going to save us money. So I, I think that, you know, I hope next week that we're, we can say that we got the green light, let's get these guys, these, these deputies hired. That's my, that's, that's what I'd like to see.
I appreciate that.
All right, is that it on that one?
Yes, all I have, yes, sir.
All right, so now we have the shotguns.
Yes, sir. If you look on the very first page, our surplus is 38 shotguns. I included Debbie Jones' email because I thought it definitely pointed out a very good plus for the reasons why we want to get away from a 12-gauge, less lethal approach and move to more towards a 40-millimeter launcher type of approach. As you can see that I highlighted under there, reliability issue alone can raise an eyebrow when we talk about the close engagement of either a beanbag round from a shotgun or a foam round from a 40-millimeter launcher. The minimum engagement range is five feet compared to a 12-gauge shotgun with a 40-millimeter launcher, which means that if a deputy makes a mistake and their proximity is, is within that five feet, then liability-wise, there is a significant decrease in potential injuries to the subject, meaning it will penetrate, it could leave a mark, but it will penetrate. When you talk about a shotgun beanbag round, now you have to talk about a 20-foot range minimum from the subject. If you're inside that 20 feet, then a potential severe injury from that beanbag round is death. Most of the uses for the 12-gauge shotgun, we use it for breaching, we could use it, as I was taught in NRA firearms class, that you could use what's essentially referred to as a combat load, or the difference between a slug and a double-up buck. Talked a bit if we ever had to use that, but essentially, you're putting your deputies in a decision, what round or what type of round do I use? And they actually have to then midstream utilize an appropriate round. When you talk about low-light situations, that could be a potential problem when you're shooting double-up buck in development versus a slug. So there's other issues that, underlying issues when we talk about different weapon systems. The 40-millimeter launcher does have other uses to it as well. It could be used for breaching, but it can also be used for crowd control in, in the atmosphere that you're seeing across the nation, I mean, we need to be prepared. But very similar uses with the 40-millimeter launcher exist as it did with the shotgun. If you look at the next page, you're looking at a circle, four of them, which encompass a Fairfax powder barricade breaching round that CSF infects with, correct? And then you have CS flamethrowers. Now, the problem with Fairfax insulated was that we had CS gas. The unfortunate part was that CS gas was plant-based, it produced these flames. So that's not something that you want to throw inside of the house or a residence. So we had the wrong pipe of gas, which we were rectifying as we speak. These, these rounds... these rounds that the 40-millimeter launcher uses does not. And that would be a lot more efficient, in terms of versus hand throwing a CS gas grenade inside of the residence that may or may not produce a flame, versus actually using a weapon system that actually deploys such a round a lot more accurately and efficiently, if we ever had to use them. The Fairfax incident comes to mind fairly quickly. You also have training rounds, obviously, what if we were to acquire these weapon systems, we would need those. You have a single launcher to, all the way to a four-shot launcher. And if you turn to the fourth page, you would see a quote from Valley, in regards to the acquisition of these 38 shotguns, and they're also willing to take damage to them. And just to give you an idea of the cost. Now, these 40-millimeter launchers would be about $1,400 to $1,500 per unit, which, going by the numbers just from the quote from Valley, would actually allow us to have seven of them. We would actually distribute to the, each ship, as well as one for a SWAT team. Not to say that we would not like to acquire more down the road for SWAT team, and of course residual for any malfunctions or anything that needs to be sent off. Ideally, we would love to have a lot more for each ship, so all of them would have one.
So this is, okay, but right now, you're saying this would be a specialty weapon, let's say?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, basically call for it?
Yes, 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 sir. Madison Police Department has an excellent video of 2017, just to give you an example of how effective this less-than-legal issue is. As the commission is well aware, we're dealing with a significant increase in mental hygiene and welfare checks. It, it, it has visibly increased over the past few months, as we get on the post-project, and everyone realizes in counseling that they should have done, they never did, or other issues. But Madison Police Department brings up a good example, which we could be very well see at any point in time where someone commits suicide, or wants to commit suicide, and they want to do so by cop. I do not want that situation to ever reveal itself. And in this particular situation, the subject was wanting to cut his own throat, and the officer was able to get within 100 feet, and be able to deploy that 40-40-millimeter launcher in the abdomen of the subject such quickly, the subject drops the knife, they were able to move in very quickly, and put blood clotting agents on the duct that he did have at the time, essentially saving his life. The good part about the 40-millimeter launcher is that it's upward of 120 feet away deployment. The shotgun is only 75. So again, you increase your, your ability to accurately engage a subject in a potential scenario like that by, you know, all over 50 feet. So there's a huge benefit, especially with what we're seeing across the atmosphere, from a law enforcement perspective, when it comes to those that more often choose to call law enforcement, to get law enforcement involved, and it's putting us in the middle of making a choice. And I don't want to ever have to make that choice, if we can give our deputies the capability of saving a life versus taking one. Because I would never ask my deputies to not utilize the appropriate amount of force and give them situational, because they're, you know, because they're apprehensive of taking that life that comes pointed at them. I don't want that situation to reveal itself. So as soon as they identify a situation, it gives us option, if they identify a situation like that, they can deploy from 120, 145 feet away, with this 40-millimeter launcher, and be able essentially to do the subject with no presence of legal force. So that's, that's the good about it. The last couple sheets is the inventory of the 38 shotguns that I have included within the packet.
Sheriff, how does this affect, how's this going to affect your budget? And by that I'm asking, and, and you probably know that already, that I'm going to ask about how the money goes. So how does training work for this? Is this expensive to go through a training? Is it a training process that has to be annually done? Like, what have we got, 2,000 rounds of ammunition you have to do every year with, with police force?
Yes, definitely, yeah.
So, so is there, is there training? How does this affect your budget long-term? Is this, and, and it sounds like a really good idea, I'll add that as well. It sounds like a, a good option to disable somebody without, without giving them a gunshot wound. So it does sound like a good idea, but I'm just curious. And I've got questions also about the disposal of the shotguns, how that procedure's supposed to take place and all, but, but if you could answer, or, or address the budget side of it.
Sure. Just like with any other weapon system, just like the same investment that has been done historically with the shotguns and their qualifications that we've had to do, it would be a, a trade, it would be an equal trade. As a matter of fact, since these are foam rounds, I would venture to say that the training requirement would not be as strict as an actual firearm is concerned. I mean, there's, there's training, you'd have to send an instructor, train-the-trainer type of, of class and instructor, and that instructor would be hence coming back to train the department. So it's the same investment that you've seen historically. So I do not see any huge significant increase in budget, other than that, that one of the last pictures I included in your packet is a picture of the 40-millimeter launcher, and as well as that foam round. The foam round is more expensive, but if you're asking, if you're asking for something that's safer, that reduces liability and risk, then I'll invest a couple more dollars in, in the foam round to, to do just that. So the increase would only be in terms of the ammunition, not necessarily the training or the instructor.
And then you always have the option to use your gun fund for this, right?
Yes, sir.
Does, our, I, I know we have to get three bids, I mean, all of that. We have to get, and I see you got one bid for, a purchase from Valley on that. Is it, is it a requirement that they get three bids?
Well, what, what, what we have to do.
Or declared surplus?
This is taxpayer, or just property. And we just actually had Jeff re-serve this, just within the past month, when they came to.
Freezers, right.
Access freezers. What the council has to do, and, and we're particularly sensitive about the disposal of weapons.
Oh, that's cool.
Only because of what has.
Happened in the past.
Happened in the past. I'm not saying that it happened under the watch of this sheriff, but it, there have been some questions about the disposal of weapons in the past. What we would do is, is verify that serial numbers are, are correct. The counts within, we'd have to, we'd have to list it, we'd have to itemize every gun by serial number, you'd have to declare it a surplus.
She's already done that.
Well, they haven't been declared surplus.
No, no, but I mean, but the serial numbers.
Right. And, and then, we'd have to, we'd have to, they either have to be optioned off, or we'd have to get sealed, sealed bids.
But, but we also had in that discussion that we could auction them off and put a minimum bid.
Correct.
Auction them off.
What was that? What'd you say?
Have a minimum bid.
Minimum bid.
Oh, yeah, right.
So, we, we don't have to have a surplus property option, like we do periodically. We could declare them surplus, and then set aside, you know, a 38 period or.
Right, but we just can't pick a purchaser.
Correct, and then we, you could set a minimum.
We can either do online, or we could do mail.
Do online or sealed.
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's established, that's established by Western Virginia.
Right, and the same process with purchasing these launchers, you have to go through the bidding process like we normally do.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, one of the bids we just put out was some of these, the, the stuff that's from Safari Land, right? It wasn't, that we put a bid out for.
Ultra ammunition.
But that bid's back out on the street. It was the non-lethal rounds.
That's what I'm talking about.
We didn't get, we didn't get any bids.
Right.
The first time.
So it's back on the street.
So is this, is this not counted, considered non-lethal?
This, this would be considered non-lethal, yes, sir.
Is this something that we asked for to the, to the, the non-lethal is completely different than this?
Yes, sir.
That's out on the street?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then the first pages from, from this company, that is, as Dan was saying, and you said, is supplies that would have to be replenished.
Yes, as you can.
Right, so, so, so that, that's, that's, that's the part that we're talking about on. It's, it's kind of like, and, and the guns, you're, if I'm correct on this, the guns that, the money that we would sell the shotguns for would buy you, you would take that money and buy the actually 44-millimeter, right?
Yes, and the good part about these guns is, with the, with the shotguns, there's, you're very limited on training rounds. With the 40-millimeter, you can train utilizing the trainer rounds without, and keep those in, and essentially continue the training.
On the training rounds?
Yeah.
Right, the training round. But, the ones that's out on the streets would be a new one each time, if it was used, right?
If it was used.
Because it probably changes the flight and all that other stuff.
Yes, sir.
So, so, is, does this mean you won't have any shotguns?
No.
So.
Well, that's the.
So there's also probably a large amount of ammunition that you have stocked as well, you'll be disposing of too, right?
Yes, sir.
Well, if you see that part of Valley Guns Club, it's 620 rounds, one ounce load, and 500 defenders load.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see that.
So that should all have to be put out for weapons.
So this will do.
I see the shotgun, let it skip right over there.
So this will do everything that makes your deputies feel comfortable with that.
Absolutely. At the same time, producing the liability of the department, counting the words to any of those user-force instances, like they're exemplified again.
Sheriff, I heard the, the president ask about your gun account. Did any of the funds from the forfeiture account be used to purchase additional?
Yes, sir.
I think this is, I mean, it's, it's real similar to what we talked about, and we've been doing for a very long time, trying to figure out ways to save life. And, you know, you're, you're obviously get people with, obviously not in the right state of mind, that you have to confront. And to be able to save lives by doing this, I think, makes total sense.
Behave yourself.
Well.
I can see where this conversation's going.
So, in my view.
You need to test on me, Doug, volunteer.
It allows for a little bit more of a safety net for the deputies, that they don't have to get so close to encounter this subject. So to go from 75 feet, is that what you told me, with a shotgun?
Yeah, with a shotgun, yes, sir.
That we can now, they can go to 125 feet.
Yes, sir.
So it gives them an extra 50 foot, that they can perhaps protect themselves better.
Not only that, but I, I would think a, a huge, huge mental benefit for a deputy to be able to shoot one of these to disarm somebody or neutralize somebody, as opposed to actually shooting somebody. So I would think, I would think from a mental standpoint, that would be a huge benefit for your employees.
And each, each scenario is distinct, obviously. And I'm a big advocate of training, as the commission knows and understands, that we'll have the appropriate amount of training. Specifically, as it pertains to lethal cutting instruments, you know, the old adage, if you were 21 feet, you were authorized to use deadly tools. If someone was armored with a knife, that was proven through the tool or drill, that, that someone could actually cut you, if they were within 21 feet of you, given the, you know, the speed and the forward movement of the subject with that knife. It is now 26 feet. So we'll be well outside of that range with these weapons, and be able to, you know, essentially disarm those, or in the, in the scenario where they do have lethal cutting instruments. So it, it can definitely reduce the cost of a life when it comes to lethal cutting instruments.
I would think that just the visual of that would change your mind, if.
It can be a.
I can tell you what.
Even the sound of closing, the change.
My.
I give up.
My trip in Florida one time years ago, and just on paintball with my Salomon, wasn't make, enough to make, you know, you think you're heading, and you get shot in the rear. You know, it's like, wow, I didn't know, I didn't know it was sticking out there. So, yeah, it makes you really think about the situation that everybody's in, could be in. So, and, so I guess my last comment is, you have 38 shotguns, that looks like that you're going to want to surplus out, and you're only, and you're looking at purchasing, you said six?
There, rounds out to be about seven.
Okay.
Units, that's on the front end of it.
Right. So naturally, in the, in the future, I would think that you're going to come back and want more.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I can't imagine taking 38 off and putting seven on. And I guess the, the one thing that we, I would like to see, and no disrespect to you, Sheriff, but the, the, the problem that we have sometimes is, well, even, and we say this about grants, and, you know, it's, it's kind of like the three-wheel motorcycles that's over there. They were grants, right, and a hundred percent, but yet, then we have to maintain them, and we have to be able to, not so much maintain them, but once they're there, then the sheriff in at the time would want to replace them possibly, right? So then, you know, so you're building, you know, stuff, yeah, expenses could be reoccurring. So one of the things, and I don't even know if this is, if this is actually the right way to do things, is on something like this, I'd like to even see, again, no disrespect to you, it's, it's who's going to fill our seats one day, is to have a MOU, that if we're going to do this, that this, this, the, the replacement of these guns with, or anything else, would come out of the gun fund. I don't know if that's, that's possible, or.
I don't mind that at all. I can tell you, being a Gulf armor, that just knowing weapon systems, that the weapon system of 40-millimeter is a lot less intricate than your actual firearms, and, and they're easy to maintain. So it's, it's sort of the maintenance of it, and the reliability. I personally have never seen one malfunction or break. They stay very clean, so the longevity of these weapons, the longevity of last, I mean, you're increasing their as well. So I would definitely agree to an MOU.
Okay, well, I mean, just a possibility, I mean, but, okay, all right.
In the council, we, and I can get the order together for that surplus. And as part of that order, I'll indicate in there that the proceeds, as once we dispose of them through sealed bids, competitive bids, the proceeds, instead of going back to the general fund, in your contingency, who would actually use that, if the council agrees to, to use the funds from the surplus, to help offset the cost of the, of the 40-millimeter launcher.
All right, so, the rounds and the supplies for the rounds, is that single source, or is that an RFP as well?
You'll have to do, we'll have to do an RFP, just as I gave you the example.
Right.
There's, there's a couple of them that, that make them.
Okay.
And it's part, when we, when Tracy works with the sheriff on the RFP, we'll indicate seven launcher, there's so many training rounds, and then so many practical rounds.
Right.
And then there's a perfectly clean hit, and some other things.
Now, with the round, the, the rounds and all that stuff, would that come out of the gun fund too? Or is that part of the, what you want out of your general budget?
We'll try to look at it from both avenues, honestly. Worst case scenario, I don't find a problem taking an O P.
Well, we can buy the shotgun shells out of this pregnant budget anyway.
I know, I know. But, it was. I know, I know, but, yeah, it was, so, um, I guess the next step is, is get the RFPs out on the street, because we gotta have these guns before we surplus the other guns, right?
Not sure.
No, I mean, you wanna keep your shotguns until you have these new ones to come in, right?
Uh, no, the thirty-eight, we don't have to.
You don't have to keep them, you can surplus them out anytime, okay.
We can do both at the same time.
Yeah, all right, so I guess the next thing is, get the RFP out and declare the surplus, right?
Yes, sir.
And get them out on bid.
Forty millimeter round.
Forty mils round.
Ouch.
You can't run that fast, sir.
No, I can't.
I want to.
We can, we can have it in that conception, you can drive it out.
As long as, as long as I'm a hundred and seventy-five, if you are a foot away.
That's a good way to raise a little money for the rounds.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Cause I, you know, I, I'd pitch in to watch you try it out.
I knew that was coming.
All right.
Should, should we, should we dispose of these, because we don't wanna get that information, uh, if you've got somebody that's giving a bid on that, make it public.
All right, all right, so it sounds like you have the direction to move home?
I appreciate it.
Sheriff, I'll keep mine, these area numbers are, are good.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, Mr. President, your, uh, Jeff, Mr. Smith, your candidate for the BZA is, is here.
Okay, all right. All right, so, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Captain, good to see you.
Thank you.
Penny, you want to, um, let the ladies know just to order something in, surprise me? For, for Alan and I? All right, um, next on our agenda, we'll go back and, uh, we have Jeffrey Smith, I think, right?
Yes, sir.
Um, please come to the podium, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you wanna serve on the BZA.
Yes, sir, thank you, uh, for being here today. First, I want to apologize for not being here earlier, I've been traveling in Chicago, San Luis, I've been on central time, my phone switched, my date and time is central time, and so I'm, I'm trying to get myself back.
Well, it's good that you explained yourself, cause I was a chuckle against you.
I usually don't show up late. Uh, again, my name is Jeff Smith, I'm fifty-two years old, I was born and raised in Marsburg, West Virginia, um, four years in the military, uh, back to Doctor Science degree in Shepherd, uh, for chemistry and biology, been married for twenty-two years, my wife, Dawn, who was born and raised here also, we have three children, eleven-year-old and seven-year-old twins, so, again, I'm a West Virginia boy, born and raised here, I love my state of West Virginia, um, and the reason I'm here today is, I just, I wanna be involved, and I feel like, um, I'm in this, where I want to have some, uh, voice in a west wing in my county, so that, again, I am a born and raised here.
Uh-huh.
And that's why I'm here for that.
Okay, all right, um, I got a question, uh, Anthony, uh, the BZA is for both zone districts, is that right?
That's correct.
So, is there anything in that that says that there has to be equal representative?
The statute says that representatives have to, members have to live in a zone area.
Okay, okay, all right, I just wanna make sure.
That's a good question, I mean, think about that.
I ain't surprised you to that.
Every now and then, you, every now and then, you come up with a good.
Throw me a cookie once in a while. Yeah, um, so, wh- what we'll do, just go around and ask you any questions that, that may come up with the county council, there won't be any decisions made today, um, but we, we do look to fill those vacancies, I guess, I wasn't here last week, so we still have all the vacancies, right? All right, um, so you have anything else to tell us before we start?
I, I did, did wanna mention also, as far as my profession, um, I do live in Mount Brook State, so I'm in the zone, um, I've, I've been a special agent with Department of Justice, Treasury for the last twenty-two years.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I feel like I'm one of these people, that my job has been to be an impartial secret truth, uh, not biased, always with the way the evidence in front of me, make my decisions based on evidence, all the biases, uh, collude that, and I've been, I'm a federal polygraph examiner, so.
I was gonna say, I said truths is all about you, right?
We are impartial secret truth, everything that I do for our federal polygraphs, going out against is independent of what the investigator's doing, I have no agenda, I just look to the truth, and that's why I'm here.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's very important in this, that, uh.
Nichols Department stores years ago would give you polygraph tests.
No.
Yes, sir, yeah.
And I think that's very good that you add that comment, because at our, our last meeting, um, we, uh, had, one of the attorneys was concerned that new members to this board, uh, may be biased on their opinions and vote no to everything, and, uh, of course, there is an appeal process, and we did talk, um, the last meeting about, um, about even a training process, that maybe what we'll try to put together is, uh, have legal counsel do some type of training process to these individuals when they start.
Kinda like Robert Rule.
Well, yeah.
That's extreme.
Yeah, yeah, just some, some type of process for that, but, um, but I think it's, I think you're absolutely right, I think it's important to go into it with, uh, an understanding that you need to look at both sides of the situation, I appreciate you saying that.
All right, Mr. Barnhart.
Um, the Board of Zoning Appeals, of course, deals with zoning applicants and, you know, working it out, and it's very infrequent, in fact, never, right?
The last one that was done was when Bank of Charleston put their bank there, that was in the zone district, they asked for a variance, and they were, they got the variance, as far as I know of, that was the last one.
Yeah, that, that's, yeah, nothing in recent, recent.
And I don't know of anything in Wendywall, other than I know probably thirty-some years ago, so.
So, you, you'd see that, you know, very infrequent, how do you feel about zoning? Do you, are you in favor of zoning generally, or not a favor of it, or expanded, or contracted, or?
I would look at it as a case-by-case issue, but I'm surely in favor of zoning, I think it has its purposes, but I think it's, to each, each, each scenario, it's gonna depend on whether or not, um, uh, zoning should be appealed or not, it just really depends on it's a case-by-case issue, but I'm definitely for zoning.
The Tuscarora zoning district, I don't know if you've ever seen it, the maps, it's a rather bizarrely shaped entity, and it takes in very little of Chateau Gay, it's, amazing how little of Chateau Gay is actually in the zoned area.
It follows old boundaries.
Yeah, and, you know, has no bearing on, you know, some lots are split, you know, this is, and parts in, parts out, um, you have any feeling about that?
I do, I think it's, uh, in fact, I think the community that I live in, Mount Brook State, I, I believe some of the neighbors, that part of it is outside of Tuscarora.
It is.
So, it never really made any sense to me, um, sometimes I, I have, you know, with what the school boundaries are, where, where the kids go to school, I think sometimes it's a little odd, but, um, obviously I wasn't around when the, when those zones were set up, but I do think.
Well, it's seventy-five, yeah.
Yeah, um, but yeah, so I do, I understand that, because some of the neighbors are in the community, are HOE meeting, I was like, well, we're not even in the zone, we live in the community, so it's, it's awkward, uh, so I would like to see that changed at some point.
Well, that has to be a ground roots, grassroots effort, you know.
And you did say you're in the zone.
I am in the zone, or I'm, I guess, I'm right on the creek.
Right.
So a lot of what was gonna happen with, would affect me, actually, my house would overlook everything that was gonna happen, really commercial, so.
Right, right.
So I am in the zone, yes, sir.
Yeah.
That creek has a special designation in itself, doesn't it? Doesn't that creek have a special designation?
It has a buffer.
Huh?
There's a buffer.
Well, it's a hundred-year supply.
No, I thought there was something else, some, some national designation to it or something.
Cause, uh, I don't know.
Well, there's a Tuscarora Creek in store, it's in the National, it's sort of places, that's more the buildings and stuff that.
Right, okay.
That work done by the Canadian Valley Institute to put the, my parents.
Clean water stuff.
Maybe that's what I'm thinking.
All right, Mr. Barnhart, you done?
Yeah, I guess.
You sure? All right, Mr. Delia?
Oh, thanks for wanting to get involved in the community and, and lending your time, um, I, I think it's important if you're, um, if you're a member of the community to get involved and know what's going on, um, we had, uh, we had several conversations, uh, over the last several years about, uh, members in these areas, um, not having interest in getting involved, and, and right now, to Doug's point, uh, we have, all the people that are interested now are in the Tuscarora District, um, but I'm sure if something drastic happened in the Wendywall, we have a lot of interest in that side as well, but, um, but I think it's important to, to get involved, and I thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Um, I think you've pretty much answered my question.
Mr. Whitaker.
Yes, Mr. Smith, thank you, uh, for coming in, I always think it's a pleasure to, to want to give back to the community, and, you know, about the zoning district that you wanna serve in is, is, I can see you'd be well fitted for it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Gokhanar.
I also thank you for applying, and want to be a part of your neighborhood, which affects all of us, quite honestly, but you answered most of my questions already, and I was about fairness, that when a project comes before you, that you can weigh it on its own measure, you know, on its own weight, and, and act accordingly and fairly, uh, as changes do, do and will come before you, so, like.
I think there's, and, 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 this is, this is my personal opinion, um, I think the, the, the overall proposal, um, that was, that was, is, is being talked about on that piece of property is a pretty good plan, and, and what I wanna say about that is, and, and I'm saying this only because to me, if I was here, I would set, I would, if I was part of the, the BZA, I would, I would start thinking, right, and, 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 so, from what I understand, it's a, it's a fifty-five and older community, which we have none in Burke County, right, um, and, and if that was absolutely designated and had to be, stay as a fifty-five and, and older community, and actually, the thing about when you get it older, one of the things that you wanna do, do is be close to medical and the hospital, right? Um, so, you're gonna wanna be in, in somewhere right close to, either at exit fourteen or, no.
Thirteen, fourteen.
Thirteen and fourteen, um, the other thing, if I, if I was a neighbor, I'd look at it and say, hmm, okay, the storage buildings, I understand, I don't wanna look at that, if it was a storage buildings that's only being used for the people that lived there, because, you know, if I was to live in a fifty-five and older community, which I've always talked about, that I'd love to have done one, right, would be, I might have a motor coach, or I may have a golf cart that don't fit in my garage, but I wanna go around to the guy's house after, after dinner and say, hey, you know, I don't know about you, but my wife, I gotta get out of there, right, so, I can see having a few of them things.
She's gonna really appreciate you saying that.
No, she, she just texted me, says she's in the office, so, uh, but, um, you know, so I could see where, because that was gonna be a part of my plan as well, is having a storage units for the people that lived within, now, it's always creates a problem that, if you don't rent them, how do you, how you pay for them, and then, we all know that, that uh, villas is a really nice affordable way to live, right, not condominiums, not, and, so, a villa isn't, to me, is no different than a single-family home, it's just two different residents, and then you turn back around, you start thinking, okay, well, if, if I'm part of this fifty-five and older community, and I would say that I wanted to do professional buildings instead of commercial buildings, and I wanna be able to go take my golf cart to my doctor's appointment, what better win, that's a great win, right, so, I think, I, I think that, that the concept is, is superb, uh, 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 you know, and I, I only say this because I want everybody to keep their, their, their vision open, right, and, and, um, and I'm gonna say it this way, I love kids, but, you know, if, if somebody was gonna move in behind me, I, I think most fifty-five-year-olds would probably handle theirselves better than a whole family, in, in a lot of cases, so there's a lot of benefit to something like that, and that's what I would look at, I'd look, okay, what's the benefit, and what's the, and, and, and make my decision, as, as they, as everybody said, that, you know, there's variances that could be offered, that could be looked at as being, hey, yeah, that makes sense, like Bank of Charleston, everybody wants to go to the bank, right, make all their money on their savings account, these days, but, but that's all, I, that's all I got, I, I just ask for anybody to be there to, to be thinking, and, uh, and what's best for your community.
Yeah, well, and, and I think that's a really good point, because it's not the final step, you know, even though the BZA says, you know, if, 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 like I explained to, uh, Ken Martin last week, you know, if, if, if the BZA were to go in a certain direction, there is an appeal process, and they can take that to Circuit Court, and Circuit Court gets to decide whether or not something happens and moves forward, so, that's really, I would think the last thing you want to do is, is leave it up to, uh, uh, somebody else to decide when you can, you can mold it and work together with somebody in your own community to make things better for you, so.
Thank you for your time, and, you know, this, we've already said that this, this, uh, board meet very, 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 very seldom, seem like a well-rounded individual, so, we always have board positions open.
Appreciate it. A little bit of a full-time job now, but I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Big enough, it might have worked a couple of years.
All right, thanks.
Right around the going problems.
All right, well, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you.
All right, take items from the public, any items from the public? If not, I need a motion to go into executive session for economic development.
So, second.
We are in executive session.
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
Hmm?
We have a projected-
We're out of executive session, no action will be taken. Um, we will, uh, take a short break and reconvene at one o'clock.
How long's that going to take doing that?
All right, back in session. This is our one o'clock workshop. And basically, the new legislation regarding the Health Department and the County Commission slash Councils in the state of West Virginia has changed this year. All we did, Mr. Kearns, was to, we figured it'd be nice to have a workshop to try to figure out where we go. You know, what are we going to?
Yeah, what's going on?
Yeah, and continue the partnership that we have. So, and you're going to have to tell us from a legal standpoint, what's changing.
Okay, I've got copies of the bill, if anybody wants one in front of them. I know you've got it on your... A couple other things, the bylaws, and one...
I'll take a copy because I'll mark up my hard copy.
Yeah, I'll pass them out. Really, you printed up copies? You weren't going to hand them out?
Well...
Just on an as needed basis?
I didn't know how many people, how many...
Good, just good reading material anyway. So, San Bill 12 passed, it's now in effect. There were a lot of various earlier versions that were going to give authority to the County Commissions, County Council. The one you have in front of you is one that passed. So, first, we'll just kind of go through it and make some changes. If you go to page four on there, before, and this is new bylaws, the local board of health or the state could remove any member of the board of health at any time. And then there were certain things that had to be removed. Now, the appointing authority, when you see the appointing authority in here, that means the Berkeley County Council, the members of the county council. So now, the county council has the authority to go in and to remove any member that is appointed at any time and to replace them.
Back in session, this is our one o'clock workshop. And basically, the new legislation regarding the health departments and the county commissions/councils in the state of West Virginia has changed this year. All we did, Mr. Kern, was to, we figured it'd be nice to have a workshop to try to figure out where we go. You know, what are we, what are we going to?
Yeah, what's going on?
Yeah, and, and continue the partnership that we have. So, and you're gonna have to tell us from a legal standpoint, what's changing.
Okay, I've got copies of the bill, if anybody wants one in front of them. I know you've got it on your, there are a couple other things, the bylaws, and one.
I'll take a copy, because I'll mark up my hard copy.
Really, you printed up copies, and you weren't gonna hand them out?
Well.
Just on an as needed basis?
I didn't know how many people, how many.
Good, it's just good reading material, anyway. So, the Senate Bill 12 passed, it's now in effect. There were a lot of various earlier versions that were gonna give authority to county commissions, county council. The one you have in front of you is one that passed. So, first, we'll just kind of go through it, make some changes. If you go to page four on there, before, and this is due bylaws, the state, a local board of health or the state could remove any member of the board of health at any time. And then there were certain things that had to be removed. Now, the appointing authority, when you see the appointing authority in here, that means the Berkeley County Council. The members of the county council. So now, the county council has the authority to go in and to remove any member that is appointed at any time and to replace them. So that's, that's the first change.
Yeah, Bill, you have a joint.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm getting right out of. We have a clarity of authority.
So, yeah, we have a joint board, so there's three from Morgan, three from Berkeley County. So the appointing authority, and when it says that in the statute, that means the, it talks about joint boards as well. That only applies to the appointing authority that is appointed that.
Member.
That we can't do anything, county councilor can't say, we don't like who Morgan County has on there. We can't do that. It's only for the three that are appointed by this council.
But Morgan County can do the same with there.
Morgan County can do the same.
So, so who are the three that are appointed from Berkeley County, Bill?
That would be Mary Jane Riner, Lisa Poland, and.
Theresa.
Theresa Katie.
One of the things that's always been missing from that board is someone that's educated on the sanitary side.
Mary Jane Riner and Bruce Samuel, Lisa Poland.
Happened for years.
Buzzing.
Well, Max Fisher used to be one of them. He was.
He was the last one. So, the next substantive change, if you go to page seven, this is where a lot of the stuff under. Under, under B there, one through three, and then page eight, we'll kind of go through these. So it gives the authority to the local board of health to adopt and congregate rules consistent with state public health laws and rules of the state department of health, human resources, which they have a whole list of regulations and some of their title.
And where are you talking about, say that again?
So this, we're just on page seven, three, A, down at the bottom.
Seven, three.
Yeah, so it's under sixty-four, so that's all right. So, yeah, Title sixty-four, there are this, a lot of regulations dealing with all sorts of health issues that the health departments use as guidance. Now, some places in there gives the health department authority to make rules, regulations. And now, the process will be that if first, they make it, and then the, if you go to the next page, on page eight, the appointing authority, the county council, has thirty days to approve those rules, or not. So, if there's some rule the health department wants to make for both counties.
Okay, so you're trying to get me to read that whole page while you say that real quick? What line are you talking about?
On, on D, it's thirty days approval. So, with, with the joint one, if there was some general rule on.
Indoor smoking.
Yeah, indoor smoking, so make that a rule. It would go to each county council, county council or county commission, and they would decide, and it would only be applicable and enforceable in the counties where the appointing authority is actually approved. So, and that has to be done within thirty days, so it's a pretty short timeframe. The other thing, if you go back to three, B up at the top of the page, is line seven.
So, within thirty days of what?
Of them adopting, so the board adopts it.
So if the board adopts it, then the county has.
It's not, in fact, yeah, unless it would get to the emergency.
So if the, so if the, so the county has thirty days to approve or disapprove, and if they fail to do, then does it automatically become approved?
No. It's got to be approved.
But there's no public hearing or anything like that?
It doesn't set up a process for public hearings, everything.
Maybe even remove that, I mean, what the board of health has always done, if somebody brings something to the board of health, such as when we had our Clean Air Organs, a local group brought into the board of health, they requested to have that, that rule promulgated. The board approved, put out the public commentary, thirty day public commentary, and then in that thirty day commentary, the board, and then again, reviewed any comments that come in, then they, they made their decision. So, basically, the boards, it's the board's option to have that thirty day commentary or hearing, but it's not required.
It's, it's not required, it's something the board of health might want to have in the bylaws, to have a more clear cut procedure when adopting rules.
But that's the board of health.
It's kind of similar, kind of similar to the development authority. Development authority puts together bylaw changes or whatever, they submit it to the county, and then the county has to approve it, or modify it to approve it.
Yeah, and, and the county can modify these as well. So, I mean, there's nothing stopping the council from having, setting a public hearing, asking for public comments.
But you're gonna have it within thirty days. You have to have it within the thirty days, right? If you only have thirty days to.
It says within thirty days. It's a pretty short timeframe, especially if it's a big topic. The other requirements there, that all rules must be sent and recorded in the state register. Something that I don't think the current rules.
No, we just have it recorded locally.
Yeah. Which, that's not a big deal, but they also must be on the organization's webpage.
Which we don't have.
Which is just the board of health's webpage. Another thing added there is, up top, section B on line seventy, the commissioner, this is the state health officer, the commissioner of public health, just usually known as the state health officer, shall establish a procedure by which adverse determination by law of the health department may be appealed. So, those will be our calling for new, new regs, which they'll have to send to the legislature to approve, but there will be some procedures to appeal it. And I don't know if that's going to be appealed to county council, to the circuit court, or where. And I don't know if you've heard anything about what that would be. I mean, I don't know if the county council would want that, sort of, to have a hearing on some of the adverse impact. It seemed that it would be better for a court than a, but those, that procedure is not coming out yet. Legislation is called.
What are you saying, we're not a court?
I mean, it, you can be. It just says adopt a procedure for appeal, but I don't know if that, it could be an administrative appeal through the state some way, here, or go to court, I don't know how that's gonna happen. So whenever that comes out, we'll come back and figure that out. Now, if there is a, and on H, under ninety, line ninety there, if there is an imminent public health emergency, approval of the county commissioner appointing authority is not necessary before the rule goes into effect, but shall be approved or disapproved by the county commissioner appointing authority within thirty days after the rules are effective. This is if there's an emergency. They'll don't have, can't wait for thirty days, they can go ahead and make an emergency rule, but the county can act on that, within that thirty days, it has to act on that.
Well, this would just be an emergency in Berkeley, or Berkeley and Morgan Counties? If it's a statewide emergency, you think the governor would do it?
Well, this is, this comes back to what is a rule, what is a policy? So, if it's a governor's order, a state of emergency, I don't, personally don't think that that would be something that is a county's rule that needs to go through this process.
I think our example of that would be when we, when we looked at the ruling during the pandemic about how many people per thousand square foot. If we had not done what we did, which I think we did very well, we came and joined with you all and made that collaboratively, that decision. If we would have did it without that union, and we would have made it on our own, we could have done that. And it could have went to affect immediately, and you all still could have reviewed it later on, but we could have done it immediately, that wasn't our method used, but it could have been, and some counties did do that.
Well, unfortunately, it seems like some lawmakers are upset with the health department.
Yeah.
And, and that is the case, it doesn't, I don't think anywhere in here clearly states what is a, a rule and what is just, hey, this is what we're doing right now, this week, in this situation. I mean, you didn't go through and draft, the, the health department didn't go and wrapped up all of these new COVID specific rules, you just used the governor's.
And, and us, we did it jointly?
Yeah, so, but going forward, there was something saying there was some disease going around, and the local health department said, we're gonna shut down all the buffets, because that's where they're coming out of, buffets. I think, unless it's coming from some other authority upstate, some health department, they could say, okay, we gotta close down the buffets, there's just new disease going around at the buffets.
So if we had a.
Then it would come to you within thirty days.
So if we had a hepatitis A outbreak, big time, we could shut down the buffets, or the health department could shut down the buffets, and then it comes to us.
To.
To review it.
To review it, to accept it or revert back, right?
I, I think that's, that's how that would work. Of course, I mean, there just has to be communication, I think, between, which here, I don't think there should be some other places.
One of the examples they used was, in one of the counties, the health officer made the decision not to allow any out of state people coming and purchasing alcohol from their liquor stores. And the ABC, as well as the retailers association got involved, because they said nobody from outstate can come in and purchase.
And most of this, there's not, there's simply not bright line in the rules.
Well, this doesn't affect ordinances that were already in effect, do they?
Yeah, so that's another part here. Everything on G there on page eight, a rule currently in effect is not subject to approval unless amended from the county commissioner appointing authority. So, everything is grandfathered in, and I talked to Bill there about what their, what potential rules were out there, and I think the only ones they take out of were the indoor smoking, that might be ahead of us, well grouting.
I don't remember what year that was in the rule.
Yeah, I didn't have a copy of that.
Eighty-four, somewhere in there, no, eighty-six.
Is, is that on the website?
I don't know. Okay, so.
Was that at the hand door, or on the well grouting, refresh my memory?
What do you mean hand door?
You could either cap it, concrete cap it, or grout them both.
No, it was, it was, all new wells had to be grouted.
Okay.
So if I'm reading that, so that basically says that all existing rules are the existing rules, but the county would have an opportunity, if they so choose, to change one of those?
No, it's, it says, a rule currently in effect is not subject to approval unless amended.
That's what I mean, amended. Yeah, so, so what you're saying is the county couldn't amend it, it would have to be, the health department wanted to amend it, and then it comes in front of the county, and then the county decides how to adjust.
I think, I think that's how it is. So like the smoking organs that Morgan County has, Clean Air Organs, they still, because they only had a very select few of them, they still allow smoking in pre standing bars. If the board decided they wanted to make those consistent, somebody brought that to the board and requested that would be enhanced, Morgan County to make it similar exactly to the same that Berkeley County has, then the county commission in Morgan would have the rule on that, where I know that.
Yeah, from what I'm reading, though, if it, if it was brought, then, then that would be an opportunity for the council to rule on that decision or change it.
Amended, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think the county, I bet you the county commission has the authority to amend it, that they chose to.
Yeah, what was the other thing? We had, we had something coming for us before, that we had that discussion, we either had to, I forget whether we had to approve or disapprove, or, or, oh, that's when we talk about the, we talk about the rates for the sewer and water and all that. We had to approve, deny, or modify.
That's the Public Service Commission.
Right.
They gave the fat authority to.
So, there are any other questions on that page?
Would that, I guess, if I'm not asked this one more time, would that refer to, like, our fees for service schedule? For like water tests, subject permits, well permits? I mean, the fees are legislated, the caps, so we usually charge whatever the legislators let us charge. But when we increase it, like this past year, the, last year, the legislators increased the fee schedule. So the board of health put out for thirty day comment period, and we were gonna increase our fees to what the legislators have ruled. Is that a rule?
I don't think, I don't think that is a rule. I think there's another, I don't have the most statutory scheme up there, but I don't think that would be considered a rule, because it does say in there that you're required to set the fees, I don't think that would be a rule.
Like I was saying, we did, but that comment period, the board ruled on that, and the board was open.
I think the rules are just. Or something that's specific to the health policy now. Something that the fee and the wire is set.
So, so the rule would probably be more like how long it takes to get the process, if, if I'm understanding that right? So if you're saying it costs twenty-five dollars for, or fifty dollars for a subject system application, and the rule is that it must be done within thirty days or something, right?
Yeah, that, that could be a rule. That's, when I'm just reading this, I was, yeah, struggling with what is a rule versus just their general policy or practice. They, they've set their, like, their schedule, they might have, we're open this time, and this time. It's just really, policy's not a rule. Fees and sorts of vaccines that we're, that's not, a lot of that's not really a public health rule. So I think, and if somebody wanted to object to that, and say, hey, there was a rule, then impacted by something the health department did, there could be that appeals process that comes out within the city.
The, so, so what you're saying, it's another poorly written document?
I, I don't think. I, I don't think there's a lot of clear guidance on a lot of these things. And what exactly, what exactly must come up to the, the county council? The county council's not gonna be making the day-to-day decisions of health.
Well, I think a lot of this is gonna determine who it affects personally. And when they go to Bill and file a complaint, and then it's brought before us, and then we gotta make a decision. That's how I see it, fortunately.
Say it again, though.
I think that as an individual, if they feel like they've been wrongly adjudicated, or I don't know the word to use, if, if they feel like that there was a decision that they felt like they were wronged, they'll file a complaint, and then, or like that they don't like the answer, it's gonna come before us to make a decision whether to uphold it or change it, or, I think that's how I perceive a lot of this is, it's gotten written. This is about, you know, individuals that filed, that were upset, and some rightly so, you know, for, you know, things that happened within your own county.
Depending on that appeals, how that appeals process is drafted, if it's not been drafted.
Right.
Whether it comes right here.
Or it ever goes through the Health Board.
So I guess the, like the indoor clean air ordinance, after we rolled and passed through, probably three to six months after, I periodically got complaint letters from at least one individual almost every week, but saying that how, how they were personally, and their business was damaged, being damaged because of the rule. I guess that would at some point come from you all, if they wanted to appeal it or if they found this, they'd have to appeal to the Commissioner of Public Health, State Health Office. If you all agreed with our rule.
Right, then there's, then that appeal then would go to the-
Well, that's- And we don't know, it says that they shall-
Well, that's how, that's how I see it.
Set an appeals process, I think that would be a regulation in, like, sixty-four.
I think, honestly, I think somebody spent a lot of time writing, writing this bill, when there, there's a legal process that you go through anyway.
Well, I mean, it didn't, I don't know if there was much input from the Health Departments and the county commissions.
There was?
We all tried.
No, I can see that there wasn't. You know, it, it's written to the, what I get out of it, you know, it's, it's trying to limit overreaching regulations.
What, what I'm getting out of it is it left enough gray area for somebody to come in front of the county and say, hey, you get to make this decision, we want you to, we want you to address this.
Yep.
And, and then you gotta go to legal counsel and say, do we address this, or is it already addressed? And, and Bill says, oh, no, that's a policy, that's not a rule.
I guess if you roll time back, I don't wanna rub salt in an open wound or an old wound, but we rolled time back, but we did do the, the last and most recent revision to our clean air ordinance, when the Board of Health passed it, and then the, the council as a whole went on record against it.
Right.
So if you all had to rule or ratify what the Board of Health had ruled, you would have overturned it.
Right.
Correct? We see now that it was good drawl, but if you roll time back, that's how it would have ended up, if this would have been a test.
Yeah.
That, that's how that would have gone.
And I publicly also said I was wrong.
I know you did. I said that.
Cause I like it the way it is, and I think everybody's doing fine with it the way it is.
I think so, you know.
There on page ten is another situation that would control all of the stuff. The governor declares a statewide public health emergency.
Like the COVID?
Like COVID, then the state Health Officer, they develop emergency policies and guidelines that each Health Department has to go by, but that doesn't come then before the county.
Which also means they could have control of our funds, they have to implement whatever policies they have to implement.
An emergency, which, I don't know what would happen if there was a, a big regional emergency. It's a statewide public health.
You're marked building fund.
So if the state says it's an emergent, statewide public health emergency, pretty much they can do whatever they want, command the Health Department. Council doesn't, doesn't have any say in that.
So they could then appropriate our funds, our people, our buildings, or whatever they deem necessary.
Correct.
So they could ship you off to Hampshire County to deal with whatever. But with that, with that sentence in there, if the governor declared a state, or if the governor declared an emergency in the panhandle, we still have the final say because it's not a statewide public emergency.
That's how I read it, it says statewide public health.
Right.
Which I believe we're still on that. I don't think they have the state emergency that we leave.
I think there's still the statewide public health emergency, just everything changed by time, with all the practices.
Even though they put off all the mandates effective at this point, which still under state emergency, but look again.
Been there so long, maybe it took them out of that.
So those are essentially all changes that I believe are substantive that are in the bill.
So currently, it's business as usual.
Business as usual.
With bylaws, are those required to be approved by the council?
I don't think so. I don't think that's a public health.
Bylaws, the rule that governs the Health Department.
Is, is there a different set from Morgan County or a county?
I would think it'd be a public, I mean, it's a, it's a rule, it's a public health rule, isn't it?
With bylaws?
Yeah.
I mean, we're required to have bylaws by the, by the code, chapter sixteen of state code, and so we developed those, but from time to time, they need to be amended.
Right. Yeah, I think you should always review it a minimum of every five years, your bylaws.
Yeah, I, I-
Whether it's changed or not, it should be reviewed.
And I included those in that packet there. Some of the things might want, might want to include in the bylaws, obviously, there's a conflict between the bylaws and state code, state code control, such as the removal of a member of the Board of Health. The statute clearly says the council now has the authority to remove the members, that's not in the bylaws at this point, so, an update like that.
These are probably gonna update per year.
Just to recognize what's in, what's already in. Or the other thing that I'm thinking, if you wanted to have, just, yeah, state more clearly what the process would be in terms of adopting rules from the Board of Health's side of it, starts there. Whether you have public hearings or anything like that, but you can always just leave that up to whatever the potential rule is. Does it have public hearings? Any other questions?
I, I guess that the, my thought process would be that there's gonna be things that the Health Department, the county council will not agree on. But we always work together and try to, try to see each other's side on it. I guess the, the scariest thing for me is for any entity to be able to come in and take over something that, meaning the state, to come in and take over the Health Department, then, and we don't have no say in it. I mean, although it's a state agency, so, but it's, it's a community-based service, in my opinion.
Yeah, and under this, if there's a statewide health emergency, and I, and I think that that's more, like, concerned some of the earlier legislative, legislation introduced. To where it was really just putting Boards of Health under the county commission, and they would have oversight of anything done, or assistance more to some of the regulations. Not going in, if somebody complains about something the Health Department did, and the county council would just direct it. It's not, it's not that situation. And I'm sure as this plays out, we'll see things going on at the counties to see how it's.
That's the part I don't like, I think they, I mean, for them to take the money that's allocated, and for us to be good stewards of the money, meaning Bill, and then all of a sudden, that money can be moved somewhere else in the state of West Virginia, that, it's, it's kinda like our state police. You know, they look at us and being all, having other resources that other people in the state of West Virginia doesn't have, so they take our state police and put them somewhere else, and we gotta, they expect us to hire deputies to replace the state police that pay the shorts, you know?
They could look at my finances and say, hey, Berkeley County, Berkeley and Morgan County Board of Health has two million dollars in their checking account.
Right.
They don't know, they're waiting to get three quarters of a billion dollars to the, to the council to expand our building, but one of the other counties has gone under, so the state emergency, the state Health Officer could say, well, we'll shift some resources to cover the deficit.
Right, which isn't fair to our people.
It's not.
Right, especially, especially the money that's been raised from the growth of the county for on the sanitary side and the clinical side.
So let's get that building started.
I was gonna ask you-
You can't, you can't, you can't put that in a special fund for that purpose?
It's still under the Health Department.
But if you recall, we had conversations with Laura Williams about our prosperity, and he has always played.
They act real soft now.
Which came to show state people in it.
Huh?
Empty air call.
Well, yeah, then there's no constitutional right to have a county government or city government at all, because the state allows two states.
Say that again?
There's no, I mean, any, any state, I mean, under the ninety-six constitution, you can't have these states, those things are sovereign entities. You can't go after the states, they, they themselves decide what counties are, abolish counties, give them cities, established cities. So there were some Supreme Court cases back in the day, I think one of them, you know, whatever town was, inside Pittsburgh. No, it's active in.
Oh.
Pittsburgh was smaller, but they, they were, they thought they were a sovereign area, but they said, no, we can come in and take.
Coriolis, Swiftly.
They were silver. Yeah. So I mean, that's just, that's just how it is, I mean, there is state constitution, it does say that there are these enumerated counties. What powers the counties have, access to them.
There are two things, well, I was looking, trying to find it, we're, we're compliant with the Berkeley County, but it says, I believe that someone from the appointing authority has to serve to the Board of Health, which we have, but we don't have anybody from the Board of Health. Or anybody.
So I'm not a member of the Board of Health, that's amazing.
Not on the board, although we've had that in the past.
Yeah.
And there's another place in here that, that grants the state Health Officer, Dr. Anjod, that she, at her, whatever she deems necessary, can come into the counties. Ours were fine, but some of the counties that have a limited amount of staff, the state can come in and ensure that public health is happening in that county, and then they can charge you for the service, spreading expenses.
And that's done, yeah, that, that could be done, that's also an exception, but that's usually done with Boards of Education, which is, West Virginia, constitutional mandate for free public education. So the state, usually in Southern North Carolina, they take a number of Boards of Education, get more, get the finances back in. I don't know how many are administered by eight Boards of Education or that, but I think they're still cutting. Simply don't have the funding department to do that. We're in a different situation up here, so I don't think we're-
Should we offer child safety seats? So in this, we've gotta retain and make available car symphysis.
They were available through the Governor's Highway Safety Program at one time, but that's-
Where is this?
Page ten, line item one twenty-four. So you collect rent, but you gotta make them available. You gotta educate.
You don't have anybody certified to do your install? That was another program.
Yeah, and that's under, that's discretionary.
Anything else we need to talk about?
Under B, all of that is under.
Discretionary?
B, on, on line fifty-one, each level of Boards of Health created-
On line what?
Line fifty-one, fifty-two. All of those things are discretionary, and two local Boards of Health may, so they may adopt, they're gonna talk about, or may do these things. It doesn't, these aren't mandatory. But there are certain things that are required if you do that, if you adopt the rule, shall, shall be featured, but I don't think it's saying that you have to.
We have some things that the Board of Health, or the Health Departments do, that are core public health services, such as everything environmental health, immunizations, SDB, investigation and recruitment, community health promotion, those type of things are all core duties that Health Departments are tasked with, that we receive state aid money from, at the rate of four dollars and some change per capita, that we have to do. And then there's some enhanced services that you cannot use state aid money for, that you can do, such as like what is health plan, expanded plan, aggressive service for, 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 things like those. Diabetes, health promotion, some of the, like I said, family plan, health plan, all those, we can't use state aid money to support. We have to use local money to support their programs.
So all of, everything. So all of, everything from line fifty-one through line one thirty-two is, is governed by that subsection B there. Each local board of health creates its health operating schedule, or is, is, or is may. That, that's all discretionary. See, the line one thirty-three. And even in, in that, um, subsection B eight there, it does say provider, that any local board of health offering a child safety care program. So, as you're saying, providers, if you do this, there's certain. Do you know what counties do this much if they have a child person?
Used to, um, the last time in our area that we had those operated by health departments back in two thousand and one, and that was the Morgan CAG. So, yeah, there's some stuff, like, either R two CAGs, other agencies that.
That's all I've got. One thing I would ask is, do you think there are any other rules that are being grandfathered in, or what? If you get us on the other side. And obviously, there's the, the, I mean, there's the, the one of the, because there aren't any. I mean, it's, it's reported somewhere. It needs to be up there, but say, they, they are the.
You reported it back in the eighties?
Yep. Well, we took it in John's mall, and now whether, I don't know what happened to it then.
That's why I didn't want to say it. So, you know, what I'm hearing out most is, is truth, we continue with our good lines of communication, and.
And if there's an issue, we'll work through it.
I, I think we've solidified that relationship.
And if there's going to be a whole new set of rules, like, smoking. It's not going to be something I don't think the health departments do. Does it and ban thirty days to council. I think it's something that, that will just back and forth, and everybody can know what's going on.
All right, I'm good. Anybody else have any questions or concerns?
Well, thanks for, uh, thanks for doing it and, you know, giving us the information. At least we're not blindly going at this and learning as we go. Of course, there may be some of that as well, but, you know, it, it's good to have a, an overview.
Yeah, and I, I think the one thing it might get is somebody complaining to you about the health department, and saying, well, now you guys have the authority to go in there and tell them what to do. It's not really case, telling them what to do.
All right.
Bill, enjoy your campaign trip.
Yeah.
Stay on the, want to, you get a credit for probably at least, you back in seventy.
Good. All right, um, Mr. Barnhart, if you'd be the honors?
Um, Mr. President, I'm ready to read it.
Well, you are, you said.